Good evening. Welcome to the Human Resources Meeting of the Board of Education. Tonight, we're meeting at, we started a little after 5:30. It looks like 5:34. And I am here from the HR Committee, as is Dottie Oden from the HR Committee. And Heather Raymond is an alternate on the HR Committee. And we also have Jessica Brown here with us. And from HR, we have Michael Bous. And so, we have a pretty small agenda tonight. We're starting with Personnel Recommendations, which were included in our packet. Does anyone have any questions about the Personnel Recommendations? Heather, do you have any questions about the Personnel Recommendations?
No, thank you for asking.
Okay, because you're the alternate on this committee, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay, okay.
Do you need me? I'll sit down.
We're gonna, yeah, we started the meeting.
Move to approve the Personnel Recommendations of March 13th, 2023.
Second. Okay. Then, we have...
All in favor. We got it all in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, all in favor of approving the recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. I can't do these meetings. Do we also have data that we were given by Human Resources tonight? Could you look that over in your packet? And if you have any questions, we have Mr. Bous here, who could probably answer them. Does anyone have a question on the, yes, Ms. Oden, do we need to go into non-public?
No, it's pretty general. We're down 103 teachers. Do you have a breakdown, or elementary, middle school, high school, where the greatest need is?
I don't have that right in front of me, but I can definitely get that for you.
Could you? Okay. And also, paras, if you could break it down into special ed paras and regular ed paras?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. And it would help, just knowing a little bit about plant operations, don't need a whole lot of specifics, but what they're doing and administration. Administration has the highest number. So, can you give us a little breakdown of where the most needs are with administration?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the administration portion includes a whole lot of different aspects, so like tutors, part-time positions. So, the number may seem high, but it's not as high as, you know, 130 may actually look because, for instance, we do have tutor positions open, but right now, we are all set with tutors, but we are always looking for other tutors to help out, so we always kind of have those positions open. Athletics, we're always looking for coaches, whether it's, you know, in between seasons and whatnot. Lunch monitors, there's definitely a need for lunch monitors. We're kind of starting to lose a lot of those. So, those are a big portion. Advisors, and then 21st Century Staff as well. 21st Century Staff is probably the bulk of that, because there are just program assistants alone, which are typically kids that just come right out of high school, that come help out with the after-school programs. There's probably, at the elementary schools, there's probably 10 openings for the schools that have the 21st Century Program, for the, just the program assistance itself. So, I'd say the 21st Century is probably the bulk of the 130 there. But the rest, they're not like huge, you know, Director of HR admin positions. It's more the backbone of the district positions.
I have one more question. To me, from my experience on the Board, to have tutors listed under administration seems a little strange. Can you explain why they would fall under administration, along with some of the lunch monitors and...
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's just based off of the union that they're in, or the contract that they're on. So, non-affiliated NASP and NASIS are all under those, so that's what we include as administration. So, I mean, technically, if the tutors were in the teacher's contract, we'd probably put them under the teacher's portion, which, I mean, I guess we probably could do that. Not put them in the contract, but put them under the teacher's openings.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. It feels so weird with these things in front of us.
It is.
So, I just wanted to say, I did get the book, and I marked that Ms. Johnson has joined us, so...
I was just gonna make that announcement.
Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
So, these are the full-time positions. Do we have any kind of idea about how our substitute openings are going? I know before COVID, we were stretching, and then during COVID, our substitute shortage just blew completely out of the water. How are we doing now, kind of a year and a half back into regular school?
Yeah, so, I'm sure you're all aware, we adopted the ESS company to help with our sub-staffing. They have actually increased it a little bit, the vacancies. I believe it was hovering around 20% to 30% uncovered positions, and now it's moving towards the 40% to 50% covered positions, so we are getting more staff. I believe in the month of February, they hired, and I'll get you the exact number, but I believe it was around, because, or in February and January combined with the students back, the college students back, they hired probably close to, I want to say, 40 subs. But again, they were mostly college students, so they're probably back now. But the subs, it's starting to increase, but we definitely still have work to do.
And then, can you just share, I know that there's a hiring fair or something coming up this month, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so, we're actually, it's actually Wednesday. The job fair for the Nashville School District is this Wednesday here at North. It's gonna be from 3:30 to 6:00 PM, and we're hiring for all positions, from, I'll steal Garth's from last year, from plumbers to paras we're hiring for. So, we're looking for everybody.
Great. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Okay, so, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Human Resource Data Review that we were given tonight.
Sound moved.
Do we have to? We don't have to vote on it?
I don't.
No? Oh, okay, well, then, then, then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Last second. Okay, thank you. Everyone in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 5:41.
It is 6:05. It is Monday, March 13th. We're in the Nashville North Boardroom, and I am calling this Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Regan, Ms. Lampier, can you do the roll call, please? Christina Darling is not here. Heather Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
I'm here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
And our student members, Warren Farley?
Here.
And Dante Castellano?
Here.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Could you do the prayer?
Sure.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding, which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, can you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before, sorry, before I hand over the floor, I just wanted to make an announcement on behalf of the Board. On behalf of the Board, I would like to take this opportunity to send sincere sympathies to family, friends, and colleagues of Mary Ellen Foley. Mary Ellen was the 21st Century Extended Day Program Site Coordinator at Amherst Street Elementary School, who sadly passed away last week. We are very sorry to hear the news. Again, our heartfelt thoughts and condolences to all who knew and worked with Mary Ellen. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to hand the floor over to our CTE Department. I think we're having a little bit of technical difficulties, which is unfortunate doing our CTE program. But I will hand the floor over to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hope you guys are having a safe and wonderful day so far. My name is Jovette Hester. I am the Career and Technical Education Program Manager for Nashville School District. And it's a great pleasure to be with you all here tonight, and our wonderful CTE Department. Thank you all to our teachers, our staff, and our students for attending tonight. As they would say, you could have been anywhere in the world, but you choose to be here. So, we greatly appreciate you guys. I'm gonna have some assistance tonight with, from Ms. Judy Loftus, who's gonna assist me in welcoming our students, and explaining a little bit about what the Career and Technical Education Programs are all about. And what better way to do that than with our student ambassadors? Our students are doing some great work here within the district, and we are really excited to present to you our programs that are in both North and South High Schools here in Nashville. And so, without further ado, I'm gonna allow Ms. Judy Loftus to come forward.
And just a little housekeeping about the microphone. You do have to get obnoxiously close to it.
What's that?
You have to be obnoxiously close to it, is all. Or then people go...
I have a teacher voice, so, you know, I could even do it without the microphone.
It's fine, but it's the cameras picking them up, so it's fantastic for us, but...
We're good? We're good here?
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm Judy Loftus, and I'm one of the advisors for the Nashua Tech, Nashua Technology Center Ambassador Program, and a teacher in the Careers in Education Program. I work alongside Martine Cloutier, Dave Quimby, Colleen Cherico, and Marissa Darjanopoulos. Boy, that one's a, sorry, Marissa, we just call her Ms. D, to support our ambassadors. I'd also like to acknowledge Jeff Leon, who's been one of our advisors for a number of years as well, and stepped back a little bit, but certainly integral part of what we've created here. So, the idea for ambassadors evolved from conversations that CTE teachers have with their students. How did they make the decision to enroll in our classes? How did they hear about our classes? For so many students, what classes they decide to take is often influenced by what other students have to say about those classes. This is the case pretty much across the board, but for CTE classes, we're talking about a subject that many students have not encountered before. Could we take what was written in our Footsteps document and make it more interactive? Could we bring the idea of those conversations to a larger audience? Listening to our students describe their experiences within our programs, we knew that they would be the best spokespeople for what CT is and does for students. The ambassadors are nominated by their programs' teachers and receive training and support to fulfill their duties. This program has been shared with many other CTE centers around the state, and has become an integral part of getting the word out about these fantastic opportunities, and we're proud to say that it started here in Nashville. Beginning in 2015, we held showcase events for current sophomores to help provide information about each of the CTE programs offered through the Nashua Technology Center. Most programs are available to students beginning in their junior year, although we do have some programs that sophomores can enroll in as well. Representatives from each program give a quick overview of the program and their experiences. Sophomore students are then invited to try it out. On two days following the showcases, students can sign up to visit a classroom during e-block. Student ambassadors and teachers work to create a quick taste of an experience that they might have as a student in the program. When we were asked to describe CTE classes and the experiences within our programs, we felt the best way to do so would be to replicate for you a sample of the showcase event. We've asked our student ambassadors to join us tonight, to share with you information about each of our programs. We have also provided a brochure with information about each of the programs, which, when sophomores come to our showcase events, they receive as well, so they have a takeaway to go home and hopefully share with their parents as well. Not all programs are represented here tonight, because our students tend to be involved, both in school and out, but we think that the information that is presented by the representatives here this evening will give you a true understanding of the power and the possibilities that career and technical education courses offer to students. All right, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. D, who's our mistress of ceremonies as far as calling programs up.
Oh, wait a minute. Judy's much taller than I am, so. I'm Marissa Darjanopoulos. Yes, I have a long name, so everyone just calls me Mrs. D. That makes it easy. So, like Ms. Hester said, and Ms. Loftus said, we have a great group of student ambassadors for some of our programs here tonight, so we're gonna call up some of them by program, and they're gonna speak a little bit about those. We have 16 programs in total, soon to be 17, starting next school year, so it's probably some of the most in the state, out of a lot of the CTE centers, so we're really lucky to have that here in the district. So, I'm gonna, first, we're gonna go in alphabetical order, and then we're gonna call, we don't have programs represented for all of them tonight, but the ones that are here. I'm gonna list them off by the school as well. So, Automotive Technology is here at Nashville High School North, and I don't believe that we have any ambassadors from that program tonight. So, next up, I will call our ambassadors from Biotechnology and Biomedical Science, which is also here at Nashville High School North.
Hi, my name's Dithya. I'm one of the ambassadors from the Biotechnology and Biomedical Sciences Program here at Nashville North. And in the Biotech Program, we explore everything related to biology, biomedical, biotechnology, biochemistry, all of those related fields. And in our program, we learn how to use up-to-date equipment found in biotech labs across the world, to study bacteria, microbiology, DNA, molecular biology, and more. And not only do we learn the theory behind these topics, like you would in many other science classes, we go in-depth and actually apply them in the lab, using learning techniques such as gram staining, bacterial characterization, culturing, and PCR. We learn how, by the end of the first year of the program, students have the, all the necessary skills to, given an unknown strain of bacteria, identify which one it is, using all the techniques we've learned throughout the year. And in the second year, we even get the opportunity to do an independent research project, which is one of my favorite parts of the class, because we could go in-depth and learn something on our own, about something we're interested, with, of course, the support of our amazing teachers who have industry experience, as well as teaching experience. Other opportunities we are given in this program is the ability to work at a local pharmacy, or partner with local biotech companies, such as the Advanced Regenerative Manufacturing Institute, earn college credits through Nashville Community College and Great Bay Community College, and get industry-recognized base credentialing. In addition to that, the skills we learn aren't just applicable to, like, biotechnology lab fields. You can also apply it to a lot of students going to nursing, or engineering, or medicine. And forensics is a big one as well. So, that's a quick overview of our Biotechnology and Biomedical Sciences Program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, our next program is General Business Program, which is kind of a larger umbrella for some smaller business classes, and that is actually offered at this high school, North, and at South as well. Is anyone here from business? Perfect.
All right. Hello, everyone. I am Melinda.
And I'm Jake.
And I'm Albaña.
And we are the ambassadors for the NTC Business Program. So, raise your hand if you've worked for a business, or have ever worked for a business or organization. Yeah, everyone. If you think about it, everyone eventually in the future is going to work for a business or organization, or even own your own business or organization. But through the NTC Business Program, students get a jump on skills and knowledge that is needed to be successful in their adult career, whichever that might be. But in this program, students can practice various business activities and skills needed to create, launch, manage, operate the money for a successful business or organization.
A cool part about this program is that students can connect with local businesses to see how concepts actually play out in the real-world business. Or they can get real business experience with some of the running the school store, and/or online apparel business, or the Jean-Darre Credit Union. Key things students like about the business program are, we learn in a business-stimulated environment, not a regular classroom with textbooks, which means we utilize real-world, up-to-date multimedia resources, software, and equipment. Students can potentially earn up to nine college credits that they can take with them to whichever college they attend. But best of all, there's a variety of courses to choose from, under the border business umbrella. So, students can customize focus in finance, marketing, accounting, or management. Or better, still, many students mix and match courses to gain skills across all business areas.
As they both mentioned, this is a great umbrella of business departments. It definitely teaches you how to manage your time, especially with working at the school store, while also doing your classwork for this class and other classes. This normally can, it can be a semester class, and then move on to a full-year class. And with a full-year class, you learn how to build connections and relations with everyone, as everyone needs, especially in a business and working environment. Thank you.
Up next, we have Careers in Education, which is at Nashville High School South.
Hi, my name is Maribel Gutierrez.
I'm Rebecca Willard. And today, we would like to discuss all the great opportunities and benefits that the Careers in Education Program has to offer. So, not only does this program help prepare students to become future educators, but it also allows students to get a taste of what their future can look like. I have been fortunate enough to learn lifelong skills, such as how to build an organized and structured resume. It's been about a year since I created my resume in the Careers in Education II class, and I have used it numerous of times when applying to colleges, and also applying to scholarships. Another great benefit to take away from this program is the focus on child development. So, yes, this is very beneficial to those who want to become future teachers, but also to those who are looking to pursue a career in the focus of working with other children. And finally, I can truly say that after completing both Careers in Ed I and Careers in Ed II, my ability to learn has definitely been widened, as in the last two years, I have learned the most in, like, hands-on learning, and I have worked closely with both a preschool teacher and a fifth-grade teacher in a classroom, and I am very grateful that I have experienced working in a traditional classroom-based setting, but also learning in a classroom that focuses on active-based learning. Through Careers in Education, I've had the opportunity to receive college credit through the Running Start Program. I've earned six college credits in the Careers in Ed I program, and on track to earn another three college credits from Careers in Ed II. With these college credits, I'll be able to become an associate teacher at the daycare, at the childcare center I work at once I graduate. I enjoy the incredible support system from my teachers and peers that I have got from the Careers in Ed program. This program has provided me with the opportunity to learn and try different fields of education, allowing me to make an informed decision about my career before going to college this fall to become an elementary school teacher. This experience has given me the tools to be successful in college, and I have greatly appreciated this opportunity. Thank you.
Up next, we have the CAD Program at Nashville High School South. This stands for Computer-Aided Design and Drafting. Anyone here? I don't think we have an ambassador tonight from that program. Next is Computer Networking and Cybersecurity, also at Nashville High School South.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Owen Casey. My bad. Good evening, everybody. My name's Owen. I go to Nashville High School South, and during my sophomore and junior year, which is a little bit unusual, I took the Computer Networking Program. And then, my senior year here at South, I took an ELO, an Extended Learning Opportunity, to be a lab assistant in the lab environment, and study independently, as well as work on projects. My second year, this is my second year being an ambassador, so I have quite a bit of experience with the Computer Networking Program. But what is that exactly? Well, think about how I can take out my phone and send a message to my friend in China. How does that, not only how does that get through the air to somewhere, but how does that get around the world? And not only that, but how do you manage a giant network like that, with close to 10 billion people living on this earth? Right? And that's, not only do we learn the concepts behind this, but we also deploy networks just like that. We deploy very complex networks, using our state-of-the-art lab with close to $200,000 worth of equipment, including Cisco, but also other vendors. So, it is a two-year program, and the program is a dual-enroll program. Technically, it's a try-and-roll program, because we dual-enroll with Nashville Community College through the Nashville, through the New Hampshire Community College dual-enroll system, and then we also enroll in Cisco's Networking Academy. Cisco is the leading vendor for networking equipment in the world, and they also provide software and all that. But, and Cisco actually has their own networking training academy online. So, while we are doing the high school class, we're also doing the college portion of it, and we're doing the Cisco online. So, we get the college credit, and we get something called CCNA certificates. Now, the CCNA certification is kind of the industry standard for network engineering, and while the program does not, we don't actually get that from the program, we get certificates for it, both I, II, and III, which, according to many of the people in the industry that I've talked to, is equivalent to a CCNA. And I've talked to many people. In fact, I just went to an interview last week for a computer networking position, working as lower-level IT. But that just kind of shows how potent this program is in terms of material and skills, because I'm a senior, and I'm not going to college. I didn't apply to colleges, and I was offered $29 an hour, working full-time in IT. And so, now to talk about the sticky note on our sign, you might see that it says Computer Networking or Cybersecurity. I believe that's the extra program that's being added, right?
Yes, next school year.
And so, I've worked with Mr. Fishbein, who is our instructor, and I've seen some of the course material, and basically, computer networking is a very important thing, but cybersecurity is even more important, in my opinion, because think of how many times you hear about these data breaches, of people's data. That was what led to one of those banks falling last week, if you keep up with the economy. And cybersecurity is very important, and the cybersecurity curriculum that is going to be taught is also extremely potent. I'm not sure of the exact college credits or any of that, but I've taken a look at it, and it's going to include a lot of industry-standard practices, and not only practices, but deployments of those cybersecurity solutions. And I know that Mr. Fishbein has plans to expand the program to multiple cybersecurity programs. Thank you for listening. Have a good night.
Up next is Construction Technology at Nashville High School South. I don't think we have anyone from there. And Cosmetology is next, here at Nashville High School North. No one from the, and, yes, actually, they are open to the public tonight, offering salon services. So, during the school week, they have, some days are open for staff, and then Monday nights are open to the public. So, that's pretty cool. They're busy in there right now. And Culinary Arts is next, here at Nashville High School North.
Hello, my name is Caleb Gernow.
My name is Michael Meneses, and we are your CTE ambassadors for the Nashville North Culinary Arts Program. Most people think that when you go to culinary, you just learn how to cook, like you would do in, like, a normal kitchen, but that's so much more than that. In this program, not only do you learn how to cook in a professional culinary kitchen, but you also learn cooperation skills, professionalism, discipline, and how to deal with real-world scenarios. And the first year is a very structured course. You have one semester of baking and one semester of actual culinary. You have one semester of baking and one semester of actual culinary. You create dishes based on the unit and your further, to further your knowledge on that unit. For example, in the baking semester, we make three types of cookies, sort of by the creaming method used to make cookies. In the second year, you learn more independence with the chef's guidance. We also do a lot of community service, such as making apple pies for Sullivan Farms that benefit the Salvation Army. We made meals on Thanksgiving to those in need for our school community. And just this past week, we made about 750 dinner rolls for New Hampshire Food Bank. We also participate in many competitions, such as the side challenge we had participated in last fall. And this week, we are bringing four of our students to the Skills USA competition that they will be competing in. Within the past weeks, we have prepped, set, and sold different food products at our North Star Cafe about once a week, every Thursdays. It's almost completely run by students to sell food to faculty and different students. It gives students and staff the opportunity to eat real food in school without the hassle of packing like a lunch from your house. And we also offer Meals2Go, so even though you don't have to pack your own food, you can just buy right there. It's very cheap, and honestly, I'd recommend it. It's very good. This program helps students further their education to college by providing them with nine college credits, and then in total costing only $150, when maybe sometimes it costs like well over $3,000. It's a lot of money. I don't want to go to college for $3,000. Trifqimby also provides job placement assistance that has a job board with flyers for local businesses that are hiring, such as the Southern New Hampshire Medical Center. To conclude, culinary arts not only helps you get through high school, but also gets you through the rest of your life in work and at home. Thank you.
And I think it would be great to add that the Culinary Skills Competition will take place this Wednesday and Thursday here at Nashua High School North. So if you get some time, stop by. Kids will be doing some great things.
Thank you. Is there a question?
Is the competition during the day or at nighttime?
It's Wednesday. We'll see if we have a delayed opening or not, but it's Wednesday during the day until about 3:30, and Thursday, the same thing, until 3:30.
Okay, so since you don't have a microphone, Wednesday, during the day until about 3:30, weather permitting, and Thursday during the day until about 3:30. And we'll be done with snow by Thursday.
Thank you. Okay, up next is Design and Visual Communications here at North.
Hello, my name is Xavier Emery, and I am the ambassador for Design and Visual Communications. For those of you who don't know what Design and Visual Communications is, it's basically graphic design. And we touch upon things such as branding, typography, logos, things that you usually see companies, such as like big companies like Nike, things like that. I've been in this course for two years, and I've learned a lot. I didn't really know what I wanted to choose for my first year. I just somehow ended up in the course, but I'm glad I did because I see art in such a different way now, and I like, like looking at other people's art, there's like certain things that I might notice that the regular I might not due to the fact that I've taken this course. We've worked with, we've worked with a lot of things with typography and magazines, which I feel like...
Sorry, everybody's phone is going to go off right now.
I apologize.
Do you have an announcement that you want to make? Did you want to take a pause?
So the slight disruption in the BOE meeting tonight is that everyone's looking at their phone. There is no school tomorrow. Stay safe.
All right. Kind of forgot where it was, but I'll make it work. Anyways, so, oh, we work a lot with typography, which I feel is a subject that a lot of people won't understand on like paper, like why things are displayed in a certain fashion. But our teacher, Mr. Holden, really like helps us work with it and where the human eye is going to look first. Why would you choose this color over this color? What colors blend together well? And these, this, sorry, this program also has a lot of opportunity for jobs in the future, working for different companies. I actually went to Franklin Pierce University for a college tour, and I talked to their graphic design teacher, and he was informing that the whole graphic design ballgame changed. You know, like you might get hired for a company to make like a certain logo, but they don't want just a logo now. They might want you to make their web interface, or help them with their magazines and all these other type of things. So you could be working with this company for quite a long time, and you're basically like a one-man job doing it. So I feel like this course can really help you get those prerequisites or help you what you need before you actually go get a job in those fields. But, oh, another thing that we do for the school is that we have made a lot of the senior T-shirts and the Battle of the Bridges T-shirts. So it's a lot of, you know, working around, like there's already a logo, so how do I change it a little bit just to make it different? And one of my classmates, Liam, won the competition for the Battle of the Bridges shirt, and I saw a lot of people wearing that at the basketball game. You know, it's kind of cool to see like art that you, of someone you know, like everyone's wearing it and representing it. So it's, you know, it's a fun class, but that is Design and Visual Communications, and hope you guys all have a good snow day tomorrow.
Thank you. Up next is Electrical Technology. I don't think we have anyone from that. That's at Nashua High School North, I'm sorry, South. And next is Engineering Pathways, also at South. No one from there either. Health Sciences at Nashua High School South, anyone from there? I know, something with the end of the list here. HVACR, which is Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning, and Refrigeration at South, nobody. And I think I saw some from Video Production and Broadcasting at South, last but not least.
Hi, everyone. My name is Roland Sarah, and I'm a senior at Nashua High School North, and I'm a Video Production II student. So a quick overview, this course prepares you for jobs in the television industry and film industry, and also anything, you know, related to media. You'll be exposed to that kind of stuff. And in this class, you basically learn the ins and outs of filmmaking and television production, and you actually collaborate with other students to make your own short films and produce TV shows. And in this class, we use studio-level equipment, which we have access to, and we have a studio where we make sets. We can actually construct our own sets and break them down. And personally, that's something I've done in one of my short films, which I think was great. And when it comes to work-based learning, PBS, the channel just came to our classroom and assigned our class the opportunity to film some interviews for them, which was part of a larger episode for Nashua, which is something that I also got to work on. And for certifications and college credits, you do have the opportunity to get college credits just by completing the two-year course. And for certifications, you can get an Avid Media Composer Certification, which is actually an industry-recognized credential, and that's a two-part certification test, which I just completed the first part of that exam. And I'm proud of that because I know I can use that ahead in my career. And I'd just like to say this is a very hands-on course. It's not, you know, you're not always going to be at a desk, you know, learning. You have the opportunity to go out there and film and record and edit and brainstorm and collaborate with other people from all backgrounds in our class, which I think is great. And then we have a very supportive teacher, Mr. Leone, who always encourages us. And I think the biggest thing I'm going to take away is the confidence to bring my vision to life on the big screen, so thank you.
Okay, that covers our programs. There's one at the very beginning that we did not mention that I will let Ms. Tester talk about briefly.
Yes, so we have our new cybersecurity program that will be in effect as of next school year. So we are super excited to announce this new program. The board can stay tuned for more updates and more information as we continue to work through the logistics of the class, but that's going to be our newest course that's going to be offered for students this upcoming school year. So we're super excited about that. We also have some changes in our Advanced Manufacturing class as well, and I think that's Jamie Healy over there. And I think those are our newest two programs, so we will officially have, I believe, seven, 18 programs for all of our career and technical education programs amongst the Nashville Technology Center. So a lot of great things happening within our CTE programs. And so if you would like any more information, feel free to talk to any of our staff or students at North, or send emails to ntcinfo@nashua.edu. Thank you so much, Marissa and Judy, and our staff and students for attending tonight, and the board for allowing us to come out to be able to update you guys and show you all of the wonderful things that we're doing within our department. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Do we have comments from the board? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I don't know why that didn't work. Thank you to everybody who spoke. That was really interesting. And I didn't know there were so many dual enrollment credits, so that's really cool. I just have a general question for people who might have a teenager interested in taking these. I was noting on my nice brochure which school each one of the programs is in. What happens if your child is in the other school and they want to take, like, for example, I have a child at North, what if he wanted to take a class that was at South?
So what that student would do is simply go through our application progress during course selection, is what we call it, and they have the opportunity to work with our guidance counselors, as well as our staff within the CTE schools or department as a whole, to see what are some of the courses they're interested in. Our department also, and our ambassadors, do a round of tours, if you will, not just for affiliate schools, but also for North and South. They're more than willing and able to discuss the programs with the students if they would kind of like want to hear more from a student's perspective of what they're getting into. But our teachers are more than able to communicate as far as the information that they will need of how to join that program.
One quick thing I wanted to mention, I didn't want to step over you, but also that we have a very good agreement with Milford High School and Alveron High School as well. Actually, Milford offers everything that we have, but Alveron has about three or four programs that we don't. So students can also travel there via shuttle during the school day if their schedule allows. So we just make sure to tell all the students, you know, if you're even thinking about going into vet science, forestry, welding, those are some Alveron programs, just give your counselor plenty of notice so they can try to build it into your schedule later on in high school. So even if you're remotely thinking about it, at least they can keep it in the back of their mind, because obviously that allows, that needs to allow a little more travel time to get over to Hudson versus just going over to South from here, or vice versa, but...
And transportation is not an issue, so we have buses that provide transportation between North and South, as well as our affiliate schools. So we can arrange that with the parents and students as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you very much. I just want to say what a great presentation this was. And for people in the audience, if they did not see this, this is so professional, these brochures, that I just want to say, this is great. You know, we hear a lot of bad sometimes within the district, but I just want to say, this is fantastic. This is really career-setting. I'm proud that I was with this when they were building this high school with the automotive. My two boys went through automotive and was a great program then. I just want to let people know, when we were building and renovating the South School, they were talking about putting a bridge from this school to the South School and having the students walking across the bridge. And I said, they'll never get to the classes on from one side to another. We'd have to put a tram over there. But I just want to say thank you to everybody tonight. This was wonderful.
Ms. Oden and then Mr. Farley.
I just want to say to all of you students, you represent yourselves so well, the school, our teachers. I know Jeff Leone has won national awards. I know how dedicated he is to his field. I've had students, when I was teaching in my classroom, from Ms. Loftus's program. You kids are five steps above where many of your peers are, and it's because of the people that are dedicated to our CTE program. And you, I can see why you're ambassadors. So thank you so much, and best of luck to all of you. I know you're going to be successful. Thank you.
I just want to say how lucky we are to have such a strong and well-developed CTE program as a whole. The passion from the students and teachers is admired, and I think the opportunities that CTE can provide Nashua students is invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? No, thank you guys so much. This was such a great experience to listen to. That was amazing, you know? It really, I mean, our district has a lot, a lot to offer, but when you hear the kids talk about it and how excited they are, it just really makes, it really highlights what we're doing, and I'm just so incredibly proud of our district. So now we're going into the consent agenda. I'd be looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Anyone second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That was Ms. Johnson and Ms. Brown. Are there any items to be removed or added to the consent agenda? Nope. Okay, so this brings us right up into our first public question and comment period. Mr. Markku, I think it's the only one who is, I'm just guessing, I don't have it in front of me.
Adam Markku, I'm president of the Nashville Teachers Union. I live at Fort Jolory Lane. And I didn't, can I comment on the CTE thing?
Yeah.
My child is in his second year of the culinary program and will leave with college credits, which my wife and me are very excited about for our bank account. And he comes home and he talks about school, but 99% of the time, he's talking about his CTE program. And he talked about the dough they made, they talked about the rolls, he talked about making dough for days, and corrects me when I'm not measuring things correctly. So, and talking with the other locals, the teaching locals that I'm affiliated with across the state, no one is near to what we have in Nashua and how fortunate we are to have all of these programs like Mrs. Loftus runs. I'm hoping to plug that one real hardcore for elementary teacher, future teachers.
Because I work with the sites that work students in my program.
So Mrs. Loftus just said there are teachers currently in our district who went through her program that are working as teachers in our district, so that's awesome. I didn't know that. Yeah. So I'm here to talk about the par contract and the calendar. The par contract passed 54, 55 to 26 this afternoon. So I now bring that to you and ask for your approval to send it to the full Board of Alderman. There's that. On the calendar, we did this this year with that extra PD day, and it went pretty well, and it was well-received by the staff and the faculty. So with the state primary coming this fall, we're looking to do that another professional day in September. It will require an MOU, which we have just taken this year as one that you approved last May, and changed the dates, and I will bring that to my board on Wednesday in hopes for approval, and then we'll talk to Dr. Andre about bringing it to you. I don't see it being a problem, as it was well-received. Teachers and staff got to use half the day for PD at their direction, and the district had half the day, so it was a nice balance. And remarkably, there are people that are ecstatic that early releases back. So I am not one of them, but most of my colleagues are, so that is all I have tonight. Yay, snow days.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Markku. Nobody else has signed up? Sometimes I just, I know, but sometimes I just say things to Sam because he, they can't see the audience. It's like, it's like...
Pack house.
Yeah, yes.
Pack house. With chairs.
Okay, so this hands over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for a great work session last week on the redistricting, and thank you to our members of our redistricting committee for their timely work over the course of the last several weeks on reviewing the boundary lines for our middle schools. We will continue to work with our consultant, Preston Smith, from... our middle schools. We will continue to work with our consultant, Preston Smith, of Business Information Resources. I'll be back in touch with everyone once we have scheduled our community meetings to review the work of the redistricting committee. To keep up to date with the development of the redistricting plans, please log on to our website at Nashville.edu and look for their redistricting webpage. I also have an important message for our viewers this evening. I urge you to visit us Wednesday about job openings at our job fair to learn more about our current openings and potential bonuses. We have great opportunities for you. The fair will take place from 3:30 to 6:00 at Nashville High School North. We hope to see you there. Math Counts. Congratulations to two middle school mathletes, Sujit Sutya Murthy, a seventh grader, and Anika Gramella, an eighth grader, both from Fairgrounds Middle School, for competing in the Math Counts State Competition this weekend and conquered. Sujit placed 11th in approximately 80 students. Congratulations to both of them on their success in their studies of mathematics. Foreign Language Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Claudia Decker, a Spanish teacher at Nashville North, for being named the Northeast Conference on Teaching of Foreign Languages 2023 Teacher of the Year. This award was announced last Friday at the annual NEC TFL Award Ceremony in New York City, honoring her career in the field, proficiency in the use of ACTFL, which is the American Council of the Teaching of Foreign Language Standards, and evaluating, elevating her teaching of language and the culture as essentials of the students' understanding, understanding of their roles as citizens in the world. Claudia will represent the NEC TFL during the National League Language Teacher of the Year competition at the convention in Chicago this upcoming November. Again, congratulations to Claudia, and best of luck. More news on our JR Junior ROTC program. Congratulations to the Air Force Junior ROTC Leadership and Academic Quiz Bowl Team from, from North for advancing to the National Academic Bowl in Washington, DC in June. The Bowl is a military science competition that is open to junior ROTC members from all branches of the military. Best of luck. March is Music and Art in the Schools Month. If you have a few minutes, I highly recommend stopping by the Main Street Corridor at South to view the incredible artwork on display as part of the Youth Art Month exhibit. All schools are included, and it is wonderful to see the progression of technique and talent from our students in pre-K all the way through high school. The art teachers are hosting an open house from 6:00 to 8:00 on Tuesday, March 21st at South. We hope to see you there. Also, several school concerts are taking place in celebration of Music in the Schools Month. As an example, South is hosting a concert featuring bands from Elm Street Middle School and Fairgrounds Middle School, joining with the South Select Band and Concert Band this Wednesday at 6:30. Arrive early for a seat because I'm sure the auditorium will be filled with family and friends. And lastly, I want to acknowledge Dante, who was a, who was a guest speaker last week at Fairgrounds Middle School National Junior Honor Society Induction Ceremony. His message was inspiring and uplifting, and really a true role model to our middle school students. So thank you for attending and being their guest speaker. Thank you.
Excellent. I love when you guys step up and do extra thing. Well, I mean, you guys do extra things all the time, but that's really neat. Thank you so much. Now it's time for board response to superintendent comments. I'll start over here with Ms. Gilio. I like to mix it up.
Thank you. If I can brag for just a second, thank you for talking about the art program next week. My five-year-old kindergarten grandson had an art piece that's, that's going to be shown there, and he's incredibly excited, as is the whole family. So it's wonderful. Thank you.
Mrs. Johnson? Thank you. Mr. Claffey? Ms. Raymond?
No, just, I love that you continually bring to us all this information about how our staff and our students are really succeeding in the things that they pursue. It's really exciting to have a language teacher be recognized as the best in the entire Northeast. It's really exciting that our J ROTC kids are going to the academic competition in Washington, DC. Those things are fiercely competitive nationwide, and so I just think this is really awesome news. So thanks.
Yes, thank you. Now to you guys. I'll let you pick who goes first.
It's me today.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off by addressing the topic of school lunches. Obviously, the past few months have been rough. We've been having trouble keeping the kitchen fully staffed and fully operating. But over the past few weeks, we have seen dramatic improvements. I want to take a second and thank Dr. Andrade and his administration for the work they have done on this. The students at North appreciate it. I also want to take a second and thank all the cafeteria workers, not just at North, but across the district, for their important work that they provide daily. I also would like to announce a new program that will be available to North students. This program will focus on the issue of communication between the Board of Education and the students. What this program will be is a newsletter that will be available to all North students. In this newsletter, I'll try my best to summarize the important information that will be discussed at the next board meeting. These letters will be, these letters will be released first thing on Mondays where there is a board meeting. The first scheduled release is on Monday, March 27th. The reason behind this is students are more likely to read a short summary of the agenda rather than go find the entire agenda online. It's important for students to know what we will be discussing, because it is how we, as a board, get student input, and also how I get student input. So hopefully, this program will evolve into a valuable resource for Nashua North students. Thank you.
Good evening. I hope everyone is doing well. First off, I want to mention that I have met, oh, yeah. I want to mention that I have met with the food service coordinator, I think that's her title, Dahlia Dagel, about sustainability in our school cafeterias and our future. We hope to implement small changes that could end up having significant impacts. One thing we talked about is maybe having some sort of Meatless Monday theme for lunches, maybe even as soon as next month, although I don't think anything's final. And thank you, Dr. Andre, for connecting me with her. Another announcement, most spring sports start next Monday, March 20th. Registration is open until the first practice. I'm pretty sure impact testing for, like, contact sports was supposed to be happening tomorrow, so now I'm not sure when that's happening. But I'm sure you could, you'll be updated if you're signed up for that, so, for sports. And then, as a student athlete, I highly recommend signing up for spring sports, even if you're not experienced. It's just a great way to get involved with your peers and stay fit. And I want to shout out the boys' basketball team, both North and, well, I guess, North and South, for making it to the semifinals. That's as far as both of them made it, but I know they both had a great season, and hopefully next year as well. Just a fundraiser, there will be an Empty Bowls Ice Cream Social on March 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 at South in the Career Center. It'll be a fundraiser to raise funds for the Nashua South Food Pantry, and the bowls will be made by the Pottery Club at South. Actually, I found that pretty interesting. PSAT and SAT testing is happening next Wednesday, March 22nd. Another thing, driver's ed registration and lottery for classes this summer and next fall will be held Monday, May 15th at 3:30 in the Lecture Hall at South. A couple more things, Planet Earth Club, they still have their terricycle box in the cafeteria for students to discard their clean plastic candy and snack wrappers, to be sent to terricycle for recycling. This is just one thing students can do to make our school and community a greener place to live. Lastly, the freshman and sophomore semi-formal dance will be March 24th from 6:00 to 9:00 at South. Tickets will be sold at the door for $15, in advance for $10. And be sure to bring your student ID for that. Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds, the ice cream sounds really neat. But I have many bowls at my house from the old empty bowls for the soups. Okay, so we are moving right along. Committee on Budget, no. Finance, Policy, Curriculum, we haven't met yet this month on those. So let's pop right down into New Business, and I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
You skipped HR.
HR.
Ah, HR.
Hi. The HR committee met earlier this evening, and we approved the personnel recommendations and are moving those forward to you.
So we need a motion to suspend the rules?
Oh, well, yeah, I'm just sort of reviewing the meeting first. But we also received an update of data from the Human Resources Department. So, yeah, I'm looking for a motion to...
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules. I'm not with it tonight. This cough has got me under the weather.
I'll second.
So moved.
So, I'm looking for a motion to support the personnel recommendations that were approved by the committee.
We have to, we have to vote on that. So one second. I was just waiting for Ms. Lamphier to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So on the, on the motion to suspend the rules, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Really out of it tonight.
Motion passes. Okay, sorry, continue on, Ms. Gilio.
I actually, I have a question. I wasn't sure who seconded that.
Well, I said second.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Oden, and me.
Okay, thank you.
So now, I'm looking for a motion for, to approve the personnel recommendations that the HR committee approved this evening.
Move to approve the personnel recommendations of March 13th, 2023.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I arrived just a little bit late, and I apologize. Was there anything added to the paperwork that we got?
I'm just...
No.
No, we just had this.
Okay.
I'll second that, by the way. Thank you. I thought, I was chatting with Reagan, so I thought maybe I missed it. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So when I vote on something, I know I'm voting on it completely. While I wasn't at the meeting, I arrived a little bit late.
Is this orange paper regarding HR stuff?
Yes. That was given to us this evening. It just is information about an interview that happened. Normally, that's part of our packet that we get on Fridays, but it wasn't included.
It's, it's coming down. I, it just got stuck there. It's fine.
I was here for HR. I just didn't get it. That's all.
Just to clarify, the individual on this, this was just the recommendation form, but the individual was already on the list that came out to us last week, so it wasn't a brand-new surprise.
Right. Okay. Any other comments? Ms. Oden?
Yeah, I just want to say, as former teacher in the district, we are losing two outstanding principals at the elementary level. And I want to recommend, recognize for them for all they've done for the district, the service. I've known both of them for years, and it is a big loss for the district. And I want to thank them for all the time and all the, all the students and teachers they have helped. So thank you to Ms. Parity and Ms. Fulton.
Significant loss in our district. Dr. Andre?
That was going to be my comment, so I just wanted to inform everyone that, that there was going to be two elementary building principals retiring with this, the approval of this recommendation. But they are, it is going to be a tremendous loss. They are outstanding educational leaders. They shaped and formed the culture of each individual elementary school, but also the greater community. And as great as they are as educational leaders and instructional leaders, they are just good people. So we are sadly going to miss them. I hope they continue to visit us, but it'll be a big loss. So we want to thank them for all their hard work and efforts, blood, sweat, and tears that they gave to the district. So thank you, Kelly and Shari.
If we vote against these recommendations, do they have to stay?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, seeing that that's not true. All those in favor of accepting the personnel recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, sadly. Was that it for HR? Okay, now we can officially move on to New Business. And Dr. Andre, you do have the floor now.
So I'll be looking for a recommendation to approve the 2023-24 Nashville School Calendar that was in your packet. As Mr. Markku mentioned earlier, for the most part, the calendar mirrors this current format with the addition of the early release days. As stated, I think we have some of the most outstanding, dedicated, talented educators and support staff in the district, teachers, administrators. The early release days provides them a little more time to support one another, engage in job, job embedded professional development, and have many more conversations on what it takes to support, to support all students. So I think it's, we're always looking for more time for our educators and our adults to meet, and this allows us to, allows them to meet, and we can support them. So I'm looking for a recommendation to approve this calendar.
Ms. Raymond?
I'll make the motion to approve the calendar, but I have questions.
Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Question, Ms. Raymond?
Yes, so a couple, I guess it was last year, or maybe the year before, when we were working on the calendar, there was a...
Last year.
It was last year when everyone got together from all the CTE programs, from all of the southern half of the state, and all the superintendents were there, and board members, and it was this huge conglomeration of people on Zoom. And I thought that the reason that we did away with the half-days was not about professional development so much as it was to align the CTE programming, so that students would have an easier time going from district to district with the buses and days off and stuff. So what is this going to do?
So that, we had the same conversation with the other CTE directors and districts, so that's why some of our dates are on Wednesdays. Or, so, for the most part, we align to the other centers, so there is not overlap. Alveron, so Hegan, for the most part, they have a lot of days. That's our biggest kind of conflict, but we are directly in line with Alveron, and as well as Milford. So, but that was part of the process, which took us a little longer to get the calendar to you, so that we could have that alignment.
All right. So, so just making sure that I understand, if we approve this calendar, we're still aligned with the CTE programs that our students utilize the most?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was a lot of work to get that done last year. And there was a lot of comments and concerns about the elimination of the early release days. So I'm glad we were able to figure out a way to get them both done. The evolution of change is sometimes prickly. Ms. Johnson, I saw your, did I see your hand up? No? Anyone else? Comments or questions? Mr. Claffey?
Every year, my mother would say, because we're from Massachusetts, "You're starting before Labor Day." Yes, Ma, every year. So I'm going to vote no, because I never understood why people want to shorten New England summer, which is maybe eight weeks, six weeks long, knowing it's going to pass. Just wrong.
A protest vote?
Yes.
For your mom?
Teachers, I mean, God bless the teachers. They want to get their rooms set up, but it's the best, the late August. Why do you throw it away?
Well, some of us don't know any different.
Just like to throw out, some of us don't want to be in school until the beginning of July.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the calendar, say aye.
Aye.
And the one opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. I did my best, Ma. Back to you, Dr. Andre.
So I'll be looking for a recommendation to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Teachers Union... between the Nashwood Teachers Union, Unit B Paraeducators from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025. I just want to make a comment and thank the Unit B Paraeducators for their collaboration in the process, their professionalism, and the hard work that they do on a daily basis. So, just want to, again, take a second just to recognize that unit for everything that they do for our students and our buildings on a daily basis, but also their collaboration through the process. There wasn't a lot of significant changes in this year's contract. The, one thing I'll note, that the wage schedule has been modified. Year one is going to be a 4% increase. Year two is a 3.25% increase, and year three is a 3.25% increase. And then, Mr. Donovan, those are the high points. The rest was kind of language changes and updates.
Yes, there weren't, it does include steps too, so those numbers that superintendent read off. I just got back in the office today, so I didn't have time to put together the costing sheet, which I will do, but with steps, the first year's a 4.85, and I believe the others are about 4.25 or 4.3, years two and three with the steps.
Comments or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm not going to support this like I didn't support the secretary's contract. I think these increases, where, again, we don't have any costing sheets, so I could sit there and go through everything. The last time, we got it the night of the meeting. So I think that we, as a board, should have these prior to. Or if, like Mr. Donovan wasn't in the office, then maybe it shouldn't have been brought to us like the last time also. So I just can't support it, because I need all the information prior to while voting on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion. We haven't made the motion yet, right? So, yeah, just...
Ms. Odin?
I just wanted to speak to this as a member of the negotiating team. It was long, it was hard, but I sincerely want to thank the paras. Having done that job for a year and a half before I went back to the classroom, it's a tough job, and they work hard, and we're down close to 100 paras, so they're bouncing around from student to student, and that's difficult. So I want to thank the team, and I want to thank our paras. But I do want to say that the district team was disappointed that we could not find common ground with the union on an affordable solution to increase the starting salaries for paras that would enable the district to attract a wider pool of candidates for paraprofessional positions. We were disappointed that we could not agree on a way to do that, and that was one of our main objectives. But maybe next time, because we have, we have to replace these paraprofessionals who are leaving. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work on this, Ms. Odin, and everybody who was on the team. I second Ms. Lamphier's motion to approve the contract, and I will vote for it, but I have a couple of quibbles that I think are important to note. And I agree with Ms. Odin. I think last time we worked on the contract, and this time, I was hoping to see more competitive numbers for people coming into the field, because I think we lose people to gateways and to, I mean, even retail. And being a para is an extremely difficult job, I mean, both emotionally and physically, and I just wish we could have put a little bit more there. I was also a little disappointed to see that we still haven't gotten anything as far as moving the health insurance. I know that we're, everybody's on the city plan now, but I'm still concerned about inequities between different groups on the city's plans. So hopefully, we will see that in future contracts. I know I'm like a broken record on every single contract with, I think everyone should have the same health insurance plan, and it shouldn't matter what your job title is. If you work for the city, you work for the city, but just die on that hill, apparently. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
So I, too, am going to vote for it, because it needs to go through, it needs to get done, but I am conflicted about voting on this before we see a costing sheet. I am going to trust that the district and the negotiating team has done their job, and I know that you always do, but, you know, typically, that's not how it's done. And also, I'd like to, I guess, agree with everyone else that the starting pay for paras and for entry-level teachers is really atrocious. It's really, we lose a lot of really good talent to surrounding areas, and I would like to see that change, and it's disappointing that we are starting. Actually, I'm almost talking myself out of voting for this, because the starting pay is so low. So, all right, maybe I'll change my mind. We'll see.
Anyone else? Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I think going forward, I've heard about the costing sheet. We tend to take a long time to get our contracts agreed to, and then we want to hurry up and get everything approved. You need time to get the costing sheet done. I was, you know, had things this time, but even with the last contract, turning it around in three or four days doesn't work. It has to, there's a process that I have to work with the city on it. So the whole idea, if we agree on a Thursday, that you guys vote on the following Monday or within a week or so, you're not going to have the costing sheet. So, you know, the Board of Aldermen says, when we have all the documents, we'll vote on it. So I just think as we move forward, we don't have to vote this quickly all the time. If we want to get all the documents, we can do it that way. So, I'm not saying not to vote for it, I'm just saying that there has to be some time between when the committee agrees to when it comes here. And we, the last few, we've made a big hurry to do it. So that's, it's just hard to do.
There's popcorn over there. You guys can decide who goes first. Ms. Odin?
I would make a motion to delay the vote on the para-contract until our next meeting, and the members who would like the costing sheet, and Mr. Donovan, because he's experienced some personal issues, to put this together. I would move to hold the vote on this until the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments?
I have a comment.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Donovan on this, because, again, I mentioned it the last time, and I didn't vote for the contract the last time. Not that I didn't feel that our secretaries didn't deserve a raise. I'm not saying that the paras don't deserve a raise. What I'm saying is that you can't vote on something until you get all the information. I mean, it goes from here then to the Board of Aldermen, and it goes into a committee at the Board of Aldermen. We bring it up at the full board, it doesn't go into a committee, it just gets voted on immediately. By rights, this should probably go to Finance and Ops. Review it there, then bring it back to the full board and discuss it there, because this is financial, and we don't do that. We hurry along, push it along here, and vote on it. And I think in order for us to do our due diligence, we need all the information, and it probably should be now sent to committee, and I'm going to make a motion to send this to Finance and Ops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
I think she's going to...
I'm going to amend the motion with the motion on the floor.
The motion on the floor was, Ms. Odin made it and seconded it, to delay the vote till the next meeting, so we can have the costing sheet.
Right.
Right.
But I think Ms. Johnson was, did you really want to send it to Finance and Ops, or were you just making a...
No, I really think it should go to a committee to review.
Do you want to move to amend Ms. Odin's motion?
To get the costing sheet, and we're going to have a Finance and Ops committee very shortly, I believe, and then it will be coming back to the full board right after that, and we can discuss it. So I'd like to...
I want to second Ms. Johnson's amendment.
I wanted to...
Well, hold it. Do we have a second for Ms. Johnson's amendment? So no one is going to second your amendment, Ms. Johnson? I apologize. It goes back to Ms. Odin's motion. Mr. Claffey?
Yeah, I just had a question before we vote. Thank you. Did we get a breakdown of the costing sheet when we voted, or I seem to remember a costing sheet, and if there was one, is this significantly different from that one?
It's different, I guess. I don't know if I'd use significant or not, it's different.
So I think, I think one of my questions, because we have come back to this a couple of times now, we didn't know that this was going to pass the union until today, though, right? So putting together a costing sheet, not knowing if it was going to pass through the union, would have been a waste of your time, which you probably had many other things to do. So to wait to do the costing sheet until we knew that we actually had some numbers to work off of, it would have been best to wait till after that union vote for you to even start working on it.
I mean, that would be a nice process if that were to happen. It doesn't always have to happen. What happened last time, when they voted it down, that doesn't happen very often.
No.
But yes, some work was put into it. But keep in mind, the work that I did last time, I could only do the first half of the costing sheet, because I had to send it to the city, then it was voted down, so I didn't send it to the city, and now we're back. So I just, I just, you know, I think in general, these are, contracts are significant cost to the district. I think we should, the Aldermen are very clear. You get all the documents together, it goes to the full board, they assign it to a committee, then it goes, it gets voted by the full board. I honestly don't think we need to go to committee, because what if you had two people out of three, or two out of nine, they happen to be on the committee, they voted no, then it's going to sit around, you know, for too long. So I think the, coming here for the full vote, I think, probably makes sense.
Yeah.
But, you know, just the ability to get all the work done before you're voting, I think is a, probably a good thing to do.
Okay. Okay, so the motion on the floor is Ms. Odin's to postpone the vote until the next meeting, after we can get more information, the costing sheet. So Ms. Odin made that motion, and Ms. Johnson seconded it, seconded it, sorry. So all those in favor of postponing the vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
No.
Okay, so three. We're going to postpone the vote until the next meeting. That was Ms. Gillio, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Odin, Ms. Brown, and Ms. Raymond, who voted to hold off until the costing sheet is presented. So we will vote on that next time. Does that, is that enough time for you to put together what they are looking for?
Hopefully, yes. I'll let it, let us know if not, but I think I can get it done.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that's a bummer. I was excited to vote on that tonight. So the motion to approve the contract, we...
It's delayed.
It's delayed now. I just didn't want to leave that kind of motion dangling out there, because it was fully supported, so it's now superseded, so it's all gone. So, anyway, Ms. Raymond?
I have new business.
Oh, hold on, I wasn't...
What? Ms. Bishop? With the contract, we really supposed to make a motion to table it for right now?
I think the motion was to postpone it to the next meeting.
Yeah, but shouldn't we lay it on the table?
That's what the motion does, though.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it's clear. Till next.
Right.
Okay.
That's how I understood it. It was just a long way of going around tabling the motion. Okay. That's okay.
Do we, do you want us to redo it with different words?
It says the same thing, it's just more words.
Okay.
I just kind of clarified it, you know, a little bit, so.
All right. So I do have an item for new business that I didn't know until Friday, so I didn't get a chance to put it on the agenda, but I would like to bring it up for putting the contract stuff to bed until the next time.
Okay, so yeah, sorry. I was just making sure there wasn't anything else in new business. Okay, the floor is yours, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Thank you, everybody, for indulging me. So last week, Mr. Poska and I met for our policy planning meeting, and as we were going through policies that needed to be updated, we have two that I would like to send to other committees. So the first one, I'm just going to make the motion, then I'll explain it. So I move to send Policy BDED regarding the Finance Committee to the Finance Committee, and I move to send Policy BDEC regarding the Curriculum Committee to the Curriculum Committee. And if I have a second, I'll explain why.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. So we did this with the HR Committee. Policy Committee is also, yeah, the policy on the Policy Committee is also coming up for review, and it seemed to make sense with HR to have HR review the policy governing how they do their business, and then have those discussions with administration, and then bring it back to the board. So I'm asking the board to send BDED regarding Finance to Finance and BDEC to Curriculum, so that each of those chairs can work with the administration on looking over the policy and doing anything with wording that they think is appropriate, and then bringing that information back to the board, instead of having Policy Committee muddle through it. So.
Is this, are these policies still falling in line with the, to match it up to what we'd initially done, where we were really behind on old ones?
Yeah, I don't remember.
Or are we just kind of pulling...
No, I don't remember how old these are, but they're, they're on my list.
They were on the list of upcoming things to look at, so that's when we were looking at some things, did it make sense based upon what we had did previously with the HR, how that had gone back, should we move these back to the specific committees?
Yep. So these are more than four years old.
Yeah.
And I have a whole list of other policies coming up. You know, we've got our next couple of months planned, but since I saw these in my queue, I said, hey.
Well, they're seeming more relevant now than like, you know, let's update the Rolodex of policies that, when I was doing it from 1989, so we're probably just farther along the line where these policies actually matter now, and they're not just kind of dead policies.
Yeah, they're interesting, too. I mean...
Exactly. No, Ms. Johnson, that's, that's what I mean. They were so old, they were irrelevant, so. Although, if I had it twice, I would still use a Rolodex. We know how I like to color code.
We do still have some policies that, you know, as we look at them, we're like, gosh, things have changed a lot. But we're now getting into more meat and potatoes policies. And like I said, I just really think that the committee knows more about what they do than I do. So let's have the committee do the work, unless they really don't want to, and then they can send it, they can vote against it.
Okay. So all those in favor of approving BDED to go to Finance and BDEC to go to Curriculum, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there a timeframe in which you want this done?
No.
Are you requesting that it's done with the next, in the next meetings?
No, I trust those chairs to put it in their queue. I don't know what admin has for them coming up, and obviously, Ms. Brown and Ms. Johnson and Dr. Sarkd and Mr. Donovan can sit down with their queue lists and...
Okay.
Make it work. Sometime between now and January would be cool.
Okay, perfect. Didn't want to put stuff on your plate when you guys, if you guys had plans, so I appreciate everybody working together. Any other? Any other? Nope. Okay. Well, guess what, guys? We're on second public comment, and I saw Mr. Marku jump and run and scale chairs. So, I'm going to guess he's, he's coming. Jimmy's a good audience. Okay, Mr. Marku.
Adam Marku, Forjelore Lane, President of the National Teachers Union. I stood here when we did the secretary's contract and begged and pleaded, if you're going to change the practice of the Board to ratify a contract, that is your prerogative. And I said, please, give me some notification or heads up that you're going to change the It's not easy to turn around a ratification meeting either. So, I can lacerate with Mr. Donovan on the number crunching. I don't crunch the numbers like he does, but it's, it's a process. So, if we're going to change the process, instead of scrambling to find a space to have the meeting tonight and begging, borrowing, stealing to get the auditorium for an hour tonight, we could have waited. But no one communicated that, that we had a problem with the way we were doing things except the last meeting, which is the first time in 15 years that I've worked in this district and 17 contracts I've negotiated, we've had a problem with the way we do things. So, I'm a little frustrated that I sat here tonight with this contract, and now we're going to come back in two weeks, when we could have waited to negotiate, to ratify this contract. Now, if the process is you're going to wait until the union's done before the district does their thing, well, then we have to have a conversation about how this is going to work. But to come in here tonight and tell me, oh, sorry, like, really? Again, you want to change the process, just because the way we've always done it doesn't mean it's right. And I said that with the secretary's contract. So, if we're going to change it, let's have a conversation about what you're thinking about doing. I will add my two cents, even though I don't have any jurisdiction over adding my two cents, but it won't stop me, and you know it won't. So, can we just have a plan? If it means that I'm going to ratify first, and I'm going to call Dan and say, we're ratified, and he's going to do the costing like they have at the Board of Aldermen, then let me know that so I can prepare the membership because they're expecting you to vote tonight. And I'm really glad there's a snow day now, so we can digest this and wait through it through Wednesday because they're not going to be happy. I'm not happy. It is what it is at this point. You know, the Board voted the way they did, and it's fine. But what's the process? Because we've used the same one the last 15 contracts. We got dicey last one, and then this one, all, all off the rails. I would like to address something Mrs. Oden said in her comments about the contract. We presented a proposal, many, you weren't on the team yet, that addressed your concerns, not at the 11th hour in the second round of negotiations last month. We have a vested interest in retracting para educators and, to that extent, the other units that don't have full complements of staff. But we're, we also need to remember the retention piece. We have two building principals retiring that is a detrimental loss to our district. I'm biased. My kid's going to McDonald's Bowl. Kelly was my boss for a year, you know? I accept that. But in order to retract, then we have to retain those people. Those people keeping the ship afloat. If you look at my pie charts, which I really like, we have a lot of veteran people in the para contract, a lot, that are holding the ship together while these people come in from these agencies that don't know, I can't use that, so, what I would like to say, don't know what they're doing. And those paras are holding the ship together. So, we have a vested interest in raising starting pay for all of the contracts that I represent. But I have a vested interest in retaining the highly qualified staff that we have in that para unit that add much more value than these agency people coming in off the street. And if we're not going to retain them, then you're going to attack all these people, fine. But who's there to support them? Their fellow paras are there to support them. So, yes, it's a attract thing. What did we say? Reten, and then retention. You can't have one or the other. It's got to be both. So, you know, maybe we blow the schedule up next time and start from scratch. I don't know. I'm open to suggestions, but you can't have attracting new people without retaining the people you already have because, you know, once we get them here, we want to keep them, I think is the goal. So, thank you for listening to me. I look forward to hearing the plan or the policy on how to ratify contracts for this school district moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That's probably something that we can talk about with administration. I'll bring that up with Dr. Andre and see if it's, if we need to make next steps. But I do want to highlight the fact that we have a contract in front of us. I know it's, it's being pushed out a couple of weeks, but I am really glad to see that we are in a contract right now that is going to be beneficial to paras and support them and move them along. And I can't wait to vote on this contract because these folks are the ones who are managing the toughest students and the ones who need the most support. And they're the ones who need this contract right now. So, I look forward to voting on that. Does anybody have any board member comments? I'll start over. Sorry, we did popcorn last time, and it got a little out of hand. So, I'll start over here with Ms. Raymond and go around the circle.
Okay, thanks. So, I, I take Mr. Marku's comments to heart, but I also, and I agree with him. I think that it sounds like the old process wasn't working for people, and maybe we need a new process. And luckily, we have Dr. Andre here, and hopefully, Dr. Andre and Mr. Donovan can sit down and talk about the realities of the time and the steps that need to be taken in between negotiating teams meeting and, like, the city part and all that, and then get back to us and get with Mr. Marku to come up with a system that is a little bit more transparent and reliable so that we have the costing sheets in front of us when we go. Because I think that's fair. I think the taxpayers expect us to understand what we're voting for. So, having said that, couple of community announcements this weekend is the Friends of the Library book sale. So, they have some really great prices on some used books for all ages and all genres, and I really encourage everyone to go. Nashville Plays at South, as mentioned earlier, is Wednesday night at 6:30. And then the following week, they're doing the same thing at North. So, if you enjoy concerts, it's the best of the best, and it will be wonderful.
Mr. Claffey?
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
And to you as well. Ms. Lambier?
I just wanted to say that, like you, Ms. Bishop, I was disappointed that we couldn't vote on the para contract tonight. I know that it was hard fought, and the paras are waiting for an answer. They want to be sure that it goes through. And it's just nice to see everybody after the break, and I look forward to getting back into, back into the swing of things. I feel a little off tonight. Too much vacation. I hope everybody has a nice snow day. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
I want to remind everybody that there is a job fair here on March 15th on Wednesday for all positions, district-wide, anything from maintenance all the way up to different types of low-level administration, and lots of teachers and para positions open. We also want to acknowledge the two students. I really appreciate that both of you are working out to collaborate, reaching out to collaborate with administration for different kind of pet projects. But also, Warren, I really love the fact that you're trying to address the way communication flows between students and the students you represent and the Board of Education. I really commend that. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And finally, I'm actually, I'm really proud of us for a board because I think what we're, I know the paras are anxious to have their contract passed, but our role, our primary role here is to direct funding and spending and to do that blindly. And for anyone listening at home, what a costing sheet is, it is a multi-year document that tells you how much this is going to cost over the course of the entire contract. It's really valuable. It's, and it lets you know how you're going to be able to spend money one year from now, two years from now, three years from now, on other allocations for the students. So, it's, it may seem like we're moving in slow motion, but it's important, what we're doing. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I want to address Mr., oh, God, Adam Marku. Thank you. I understand where you're coming from. I understand that frustration. I also understand where Ms. Johnson's coming from. She, she is Chair of the Budget for a reason. She's very good with figures. She keeps her eye on everything, and she didn't have the costing sheet. And I want to explain that we probably would have had it, except Mr. Donovan had an extenuating circumstance sadly in his family. And I think if that hadn't occurred, we would have had that. So, I apologize to the paras for not having it tonight. I know they're working hard. I know they want their contract, and I believe they will have it. But to due diligence, we should have that costing contract. So, I want to thank Mr. Donovan for all the work he did because I saw all the work during negotiations when he'd go back and, and look at the figures and do everything that he did. It was time-consuming. It was, it was tense, but it wasn't negligence. It was something that could not, we had no control over. And out of respect for Mr. Donovan and his family, I think by holding it, we're doing the right thing.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank this board, members of the public, who've reached out to me with their condolences and kindness because I lost my sister on Saturday, which has been very tough for me. I felt coming to this meeting tonight would take my mind off of it and give me a little bit of time, you know, with people on the board. But I want to thank everybody for their kindness, reaching out to me. Also, I was going to talk about one of the Aldermen that I think he's overstepping his bounds again, and I would appreciate it if he's listening. Don't grandstand on television. If you have a problem, please go to the superintendent because we have a policy that we ask everybody to follow the parents, and we expect that the Alderman, please, does it himself. We can't work together as a team to correct anything if you're going to grandstand. I know election's coming up in November. I don't care. I'm going to just say it. Election's coming up in November, and I kind of feel you're grandstanding now. And we have to work. If there's a problem, pick up the phone, call the superintendent. I know he's reached out to you. And if you don't go and sit down and speak with him, then keep your mouth shut. Thank you.
Ms. Giglio?
I have no comment.
Thank you. Sorry, do we have more comments to make for board member comments, or? I did mine at the beginning. But I was wondering, because we tend to have, and I wanted to leave this up to the board chairs, but we tend to have heavy board meetings when all of the committees are presenting, and then we have one meeting where we have none of the committees. I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk amongst yourselves about moving them around to, unless we're fine with kind of how the flow is going. I don't mind it, but I just wanted to throw that out there that if we wanted to make the meetings more even, because I know before we were doing them where we had one presentation, one meeting, and then kind of the committees, the next meeting. But I really like having all of the presentations each meeting. But I'll leave that up to you guys to decide. You can get ahold of me if that's something that you want to change. But just wanted to throw that out there so that we don't have one four-hour meeting and one two-hour meeting. Okay? And with that, Ms. Johnson?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. On the motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now adjourned at 7:45.